Let's start with Aaron presenting Does It Pay to Move? Which is a great question. I came from Italy to Australia. Does it pay? Let's see.
Thanks, Alberto. I usually use the question time to remember what I need to talk about next. So this is a new format. And we're also not looking quite at moving as far away from Italy to Australia, but more like moves within Australia. So yeah, my work is looking at measuring how earnings kind of vary across Australia and trying to take away the part of the person, to take away person characteristics, and understand like, what is the inherent, actually, part that location plays in creating variation in earnings across the country? So we'll go through bits. So to give it all away, the kind of question to answer today is, how do we measure differences in earnings across place, holding worker characteristics constant? But there's obviously been a lot of literature looking at what happens when we move around between jobs, but also between location. And today's looking at between location. And work that I'm currently working on as part of this work is understanding the why part of it. What's driving these differences in locational premia across different parts of Australia? We touched on this bit today, but there's also a lot more detail forthcoming. A lot of this work is based on a forthcoming AJ Economic Policy Paper by Card, Rothstein, and Yee, which uses an AKM model, which we also use on American Data to answer a similar sort of question, and we apply it to the Australian context. And to kind of give away the headline findings, what we find is that locations near capital city centres, natural infrastructure and natural resource endowed areas tend to have the highest location premiums. And that the location premium explains about half of the variation in worker earnings, the other half being the characteristics of the workers that happen to live there. This is a number of policy implications. Why do we have all this variation? Are there barriers that are preventing workers from moving to jobs in these higher paying locations, either physically or just by transporting them there, such as taking the train, being the idea? And this kind of creates a question of, is there a role for place-based policies that have opportunity, that provide a role to equalize opportunity for workers in lower premium areas versus kind of more, I guess, individual household-focused system that the social security system tends to be in Australia and many other parts of the world? So first, we kind of have to stand why workers locate, workers' earnings vary across locations. It's kind of three reasons that the literature kind of talks about a lot. First is worker sorting. The idea that highly skilled or high ability workers have a tendency to kind of live in the same places. Many of them cluster around UNSW, for example, which then increases the average earnings of those locations. But this is more being driven by the types of people in a place rather than the place itself being somewhat special. Another is that the kind of distribution of industry types varies across locations. And some industries tend to be higher paying than other industries. And so therefore, those places that happen to have more of these kind of high paying industries, they will tend to have higher pay in those locations. And the third effect, which is the one that this work talks about and we're going to focus on today, is what we're calling the causal effect of place. The idea that specific locations pay more because they're more productive for various reasons, like one of which is kind of exogenous natural resource endowments, like places that have, you know, iron ore or coal under the ground that you can dig up and make a lot of money. Or they've got kind of endogenous reasons from the people who are there, which we often talk about as being agglomeration effects. Things which kind of gets turned into three kind of channels. The first being shared use of industry inputs, no spill over effect, and people talking to each other and having serendipitous interactions. And thicker labour markets because there's just more people, which starts with a specialise and also sort into jobs that are more suitable for their skills, which makes them more productive and higher paid. And today's focus is on this third aspect, kind of the causal effect of place itself. So first, I'm going to explore the variation of earnings across Australia. It's a couple of pretty maps. This is the first one. So this kind of, this map kind of shows you the distribution of earnings across Australia. And it varies a lot. These are in quintiles where yellow is the top quintile and purple is the bottom. And a, in an SA3 area, like at the bottom 5% of distribution earns around $30,000 something per year compared to an area at the very top of the distribution, which is about $75,000 per year. So that's, you know, between the 5th and 95th percentiles, but doubling the amount of earnings per year for each, for a typical worker there. And that varies a lot across Australia. Kind of see the, if you're familiar with the geography of Australia's capital cities, kind of expected things like in Sydney, for example, the eastern suburbs and the north, and the northern suburbs tend to have much higher earnings compared to the rest of Sydney. Regional areas often have lower earnings than most of the capital cities. So you see the kind of usual patterns, that sort of thing. But the important thing is, this is not the extent of the work, otherwise it'd be done in five minutes. And we're going to take these raw earnings and kind of turn them into understanding how much is place driving them, which will be exactly the same app later on, but with different colours. Kind of the obvious explainer for why earnings kind of varies is that one of the strongest explanations is proximity to capital city centres. And that's quite, you know, fairly strongly correlated with higher earnings. You can see on this graph here, which just plots the distance, the nearest capital city centre on the x-axis on a log scale against average earnings within an SA2. And you see a fairly standard kind of downward sloping trend line for that. But there's a lot of other factors that shape this as well. You can see, for example, a cluster of points in the top right corner of the graph. Those tend to be places where big mines operate and people who happen to be there earning, you know, big FIFO money from working in WA, for example. And naturally, there is a fairly large literature looking at what determines workers' earnings. I won't pretend to be the first to look at, to try and look at this. But one of the kind of tricky things in a lot of work is that cross-sectional regressions that use data on various characteristics of people and their earnings, it often a big challenge is incorporating things like unmeasured worker ability or the unobserved person-level characteristics. As just an illustrative example, I just grabbed some data from the survey of income and housing with covariates for age, gender, et cetera, those things. Just kind of plotted actual log incomes against predicted log incomes on this graph on the left side with a 45 degree line for kind of one for one. You can see that slope is less than that, suggesting there's some, there's some omitted information which would better predict worker income that we can't get simply from the cross-section of data. And this kind of motivates the reason for the modelling approach that we'll be using today, which is called the AKM model, which stands for three authors whose names I can't remember right now. But to feed into this model, we construct, I construct a linked employer employee data set. It's fairly standard approach using PAYG tax data from the ATO to link workers with their employers. This gives us about 125 million worker firm years between 2006 and 2021. I link that to personal income tax data to get worker incomes and other demographic information for about 18 million workers in Australia. On the firm side, it uses Blade, which gives us firm financials and other firm characteristics for about 1.2 million firms. And because I'll be exploring a education dimension to this as well, I add on from Plaid up, but also the 2016 census information on a worker's high education attainment, whether or not they completed an undergraduate qualification. And then the, I guess, the innovation in this work is the use of location here. So on the worker's side, we have worker location data also from Plaid up, which is recorded from data from Medicare or when you're filling your tax return. And on the firm side, we've also got data on firm establishments. So not just the location of the firm's headquarters, but also the locations of individual plants that a firm has. So for that, we have about 1.8 million locations for those 1.2 million firms. And we feed this data into the AKM model, which is specified as such there. They can log earnings. And there are kind of two main components that it kind of separates out worker earnings into. The first are time-invariant worker traits. So this thing about unobserved ability and skill that I was talking about earlier, that you generally can't detect, and also firm characteristics. And then there's a bunch of time-bearing idiosyncratic factors which don't tend to be important. So to kind of illustrate how the AKM model is able to kind of separate our earnings into these worker and firm effects, with this diagram here. So the model basically requires workers to change firms. For example, if someone moves from firm one to firm two, what happens is, you look at the change in earnings and you say, part of this is carried by the worker when they switch firms. And that's their kind of inherent worker characteristics. And the change must represent the relative difference in the firm effect. And if you take, you know, lots of worker moves over time, you can kind of construct model with a lot of fixed effects in the alphas and the deltas, which then allow you to kind of pull out the individual worker and firm effects. And what this, this work uses is, it takes the firm effects and then we aggregate to produce place effect. So we take the firm effect for all of the firms within a given location and kind of aggregate them together. And you say, this, this number, si, is the effect of this particular location. That's kind of what we rely on for all of the further things. So like I promised, I've got the same map again, except this time instead of plotting raw earnings, I've plotted the return to location, the location effect that we've just talked about how we estimate. And you can see a lot has changed now. For example, a lot of areas in regional Australia are now yellow. The bits of the capital cities that are highest in location effect are quite different from before. There's fewer of them actually, if you, if you look at it, it's kind of concentrated in fewer areas. So it makes me wonder like, why is this the case? Why is, why are regional parts, for example, quite high in their location effects? So if you kind of, if you know Australia's geography well, you will know that there's lots of mines in various parts of the country. And I'm going to try and click on this map of all the mines in Australia. And you realise that a lot of the places that are yellow on the previous map are places where there are various dots on this map, which is kind of talking to that natural endowment effect that drives part of these location effects that we observe. And then within the cities, you can see that the high location effect areas are a lot more concentrated in kind of the CBD part of the city, which kind of goes towards those agglomeration effects from lots of people being in high employment density areas, kind of helping each other to push up earnings. So like I said in the first slide, when you decompose what's explaining these, explaining average earnings into location effects and individual characteristics, it splits up pretty cleanly about 50/50. And surprisingly, there's only a weak tendency for high ability workers to sort into high place effect locations. If you kind of do a scatter of those two things, you end up with about, I was going to say about 13%, which is fairly low. And all the other components in the original equation kind of even add sum to zero or a minus. We don't need to worry about those sorts of things. And you've just got to plot here of the location effect versus average earnings. And the crux of the thing is, is that workers can get lots of large earnings increases from moving from these low location effect places to high location effect places. For example, we're not going to look at all the numbers, but a worker moves from the bottom 5% SA2 to the top 5% SA2. The average worker, a randomly selected worker, would receive an earnings increase of about 75% while else held constant, which is a fairly large difference. But another, the other dimension that we look at is, to understand the kind of agglomeration effect best, is to look at a plot of distance from capital city centre versus location effect on the y. And you can kind of see the same kind of downward sloping line where you have the highest location effects closest to the CBD and then it's much smaller further out. Again, you can kind of see the influence of mining, where you can see a bunch of high effect places on the right hand side, which kind of actually drags up the trend line a little bit. And that's, I guess, something which is somewhat unique to the Australian context, having such a large kind of mining industry that actually affects these sorts of things. And if you take it out, naturally, you do see the line kind of becoming more conventionally, just, you know, monotonically decreasing. Like I said, we do look at a little bit at how education affects workers' kind of returns to place. And you can see on this graph here that when you estimate separate models for highly educated workers only and then the rest of the workforce, you can see that highly educated workers tend to have, gain higher returns to place effects across the entire kind of distribution of distance. What surprised me was that the slopes are roughly the same and it's not like highly educated workers get a lot, benefit larger from agglomeration effects. But yeah, that's interesting. So a few slides to wrap up. So first, a couple of policy things. So why do we still have these stark differences? Why aren't workers kind of switching jobs to places where these effects are highest and kind of like, you know, getting, competing away that variation? I mean, there's a few reasons that we can think of, right? First is housing costs naturally. Costs a lot more to live in a, in a high location effect place often because they tend to be city centres, that sort of thing. And that might be offsetting the premium you get from moving, so why bother? Another is mobility is not costless. Congestion, in fact, it just takes, that transport cost exists. I mean, that it's harder for workers to access these high places and equalize those wages. And thirdly, because we are social animals, we kind of like living in the communities we grew up with or where we have friends and family, which means we can't just, you know, reallocate people like the benevolent social planners we are and make people kind of work in these places. Which kind of leads to questions about what's the policies could help, you know, offset some of those problems, such as, you know, building more housing in places where people want to, to live slash work, make it easier for everyone to get to. These places with better infrastructure. And also this idea of place-based policies where we don't just look at individuals as individuals or people, as people who live in a community and policies that target the communities rather than just the people within them could produce more places that are, have these high location effects. So I will leave you with the first slide, just in case, with the summary of the work. And I welcome questions.
Thanks so much, Aaron. This was really, really good and also perfect timing.
Thank you.
Easy job for me. We have a question right there. So you talked about causality at the very beginning, but I didn't see any causality here. Can you help me out?
Yeah, so the, the, like, the card paper that we draw on, they do claim the causal effect of place from their estimates that they produce. So I think the limit to which I would want to claim causality is that the estimates of the location effect are causal to that extent. I'm not going to claim that the associations where we talk about relative proximity to various things, I think those are definitely just associations.
I still don't understand. So it's not about a different paper, it's about your methodology. Your methodology has no causality in it at all. You could have a causal methodology, people use migration data, there are other ways with, and you could have done this, but I don't see how you can at all talk about causality. Very exciting, but I don't see anything causal. You cannot refer to another paper. This would be the first paper I heard about referring to another paper, says that's why we have causality. I mean, there's big literature, right? People use, microeconomic metrics looks different these days, you know? I think it's fine with the association, but I don't see why it's causal. Then the policy, of course, it will be very different if it's not causal.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think it's fine. I'm still thinking it's very exciting work. I just think that maybe you can have a more causal method.
I mean, maybe, I think that would be a, that potential a different approach. I think the AKM method that we've used is the method we've chosen. So yeah, happy to retract the claim of causality if that's a...
Yep, a question here. I mean, you have fixed effects, right, on both firms and, and people? So you are, you are purifying a lot. So I think like an answer to this could be along the lines of, okay, this is what I can capture, this is what I cannot capture, right? Because I think you, you can push your argument that this is interesting in the sense that you are controlling for all things that are time invariant. So anyway, we can continue discussing this, but, but I think it's a good point. I think you can strengthen it a little bit even, yes.
Thank you for your interesting presentations. I was wondering if you have like a data on spatial cost of living? Because if you have that adjusted for the earning, then you might partially correct the housing price and everything. So do you incorporate that into your analysis?
Yeah, so like I said, this work is still ongoing. Kind of the next thing we want to do is to figure out a way of incorporating kind of the cost of living. Naturally, it's very tricky to do because there isn't very much kind of disaggregated cost of living measures for Australia. For example, the CPI is only constructed for the capital cities. One kind of dimension where we can get closer is with housing costs, where we can get measures of, say, rents or the cost of buying a house at a fairly, you know, disaggregated geographical level. So if we can kind of produce, a goal is to produce kind of wage premia less housing cost, at the very least, which I think gets you a lot of the way there in terms of understanding what the adjusted wage premium is.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin, yes.
Thank you. It's a, it's a quick question. So one of the things in the UK we've been tackling is the sort of changing dynamics of the labour market, and particularly the fact that people can work from home more and more. So actually, you can take advantage of some of these location premiums without moving to that location. Is that something that's factored into your thinking at all? And are there any sort of emerging trends that are particularly relevant or places in some sort of broader context? Because there are more options for people to effectively work from, from wherever.
Yeah, I mean, the remote work thing is both super interesting. We don't specifically look at that because of the, the approach that we take to link workers to their firm establishments. Because unfortunately, the, the data that we have doesn't actually tell you which establishment you work at. It actually just tells you which company you work at. So we do have to make assumptions about where people work, which actually gets blown up by people who work 3,000 kilometres away. So, but fortunately, I think, like, as a proportion of the population, fully remote workers are a very small fraction of the workforce. Obviously, in our kind of circles, they're very overrepresented. But you know, there's a lot more teachers and nurses out there who aren't going to be working remotely for a single day of their lives than academics or other professionals doing that sort of thing. So I think it's hopefully not too big of a kind of issue for the framework we're thinking through this issue as, but yeah.
And I guess the only slight bias is then, some of those sort of high wage jobs are the jobs that you can do remotely. So that sort of skews it a little bit, whereas some of these other jobs where the wage structure is a lot more standardized, you're a lot less likely to see some of the market acting and driving prices up.
But the good thing is, the data series ends in 2021. So the majority of the data was kind of pre-COVID before we realised we could all go on Zoom and in a tropical paradise.
Thank you so much for the question. Any, any other question? Yep, Alexandra?
So I'm still thinking about the causal angle. Sorry to come back on this. It's making me think a lot about the literature on teacher value added, which has often, you know, people have used these called movers design. And a lot of the, you know, what makes it work is when you have a lot of variations. You have a lot of teachers moving to schools, that at some point you really capture the essence of why this particular teacher moves to different places. So in your setup, I think what would make it work is if you explain to us that people move a lot between establishments, between firms. Is this something you can talk about a little bit?
I don't have summary stats on that, but people do change jobs at a reasonably high rates. Somewhere in like maybe 7% to 10% or something like that. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of variation because what we, the model that we estimate takes data from about 15, 15 years worth of job moves. It's measured at an annual level because it's tax data. So that's why we have, I think I could, like 125 million observations or something like that, is what I said. Yeah, so, yeah, so there's a lot of like firm, worker firm records. So there's a lot of movement. And the way the model gets it, it creates a connected set of, the kind of set of worker firm relations that has the most moves. So I think we do, I don't think, I'm not too worried about there not being enough kind of worker moves to create a good assess measure of kind of worker effects, worker time vary effects and kind of firm effects, is the way I see it.
Yeah, so I think exactly, that's kind of what I had in my head. And I think what you need to show is, one, how often do people move? But then is it that you have few people who move a lot? And then your model is picking up that?
Yeah.
Or whether everybody's moving a little bit and then you're picking up a little bit along the...
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good way to check in the...
I think that's what you need to show.
In the slides.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I had in mind when I saw the big numbers, right? And you can, I think, strengthen that argument, but it's, but I, but I agree. It's kind of your job to convince that you go, you know, beyond just descriptive, yeah. Yeah, no, no, okay, yeah. And, and there are ways and, and there are ways to, and there are ways, as you said, to, to make it causal, yeah. But I would be interested in knowing exactly what we are capturing here, right? And also, just I'm gonna, if there is no more question, a mine is not even a question, but just a curiosity. I mean, I, you know, because it's such a policy paper, right? I think it would be interesting to know what, what, even just the back of the envelope calculation, nothing too fancy, but just understand, oh, well, if we got more people, you know, going to these places, how much of the GDP we are talking about, right? Is, is this like a big, big issue? Or is it okay if people just don't go there, right? So just maybe throw me a number so that I can get curious about the size of this. So that's great. Thank you so much, Aaron. Thanks, everybody, for the questions. I'll, I'll give you a sign with the five minutes when we get there. Yeah, thanks so much. So Jack presenting measuring teacher attrition in Australia, big topic.
Yeah, big topic, no causal answers at this stage. It's relatively early stage descriptive work, trying to show how new data sets, particularly linked administrative data, can help answer a question where existing data has struggled and produced kind of a wide variance of results and potentially had an impact on policy. Yes, this is joint work with my colleague Sylvia Griselda at E61. And we're trying to answer measuring teacher attrition in Australia. How many teachers are leaving, where are they going, that kind of stuff. So the main motivation for this work is that teacher attrition is regularly described as worryingly high by both the media as well as academics, often in the kind of education space, not all academics in the education space. But it's almost become kind of accepted as a fact. And it's regularly linked as a kind of cause of Australia's potential teacher shortage. The issue with this claim is that existing estimates of teacher attrition vary incredibly widely. So for early career teachers where there's been a lot of work done, estimates range from as low as 5% of teachers to as high as 50% of teachers leaving in the first five years. And kind of building on that, research on why teachers leave the profession is still largely based on surveys of former teachers that often have very low response rates, kind of often in the single digits. And we could debate this, but highly selected samples of who actually responds to those surveys. And then we know even less about where teachers go when they leave the profession. We had a conversation with one of the departments of education when we started this work and we thought that they'd be interested in, you know, particular subgroups, maybe STEM teachers or something. And they actually just said, you know, we actually just like to know which occupations teachers work in when they leave. So I think there's a real paucity of evidence in this area. So what we're going to do is we're going to show that administrative tax data can be potentially used to help answer some of these questions and provide a kind of a better approach potentially. So as a little bit of a findings preview, we find that teacher attrition rates are actually relatively low compared to other occupations and they've been falling over time in Australia. And that this experience of attrition seems to be quite different for different kinds of teachers. So primary and secondary school teachers have very different kind of outside options when we think about the occupations they move to, as do... as do high and low ATAR teachers, which for non-Australian people in the room, ATAR is just like a pre-university ranking of academic performance. So if you have a very high ATAR, you're at the top of the kind of high school leaving exams, low ATAR towards the bottom. When we look at some kind of descriptive evidence around why teachers might be leaving, we find that most are receiving a pay rise in their kind of first job out of teaching. But a lot are doing worse in the medium term than those who remain. So it suggests maybe there's a bit of a selected sample in terms of who's leaving teaching. And then finally, if I have time to get to this, we look at some things that might be explaining this decline in teacher attrition. And we find that it's changes in the kind of teachers who are entering initial teacher education courses, universities. We're having higher dropout rates at that stage. So potentially, there's something going on with like a shifting of when attrition is occurring. This is the agenda for today. I will be skipping some slides because this is not a 20-minute presentation, but I hope to squeeze it into something like 20 minutes. So if I breeze over something, feel free to bring me back to it during question time. As I mentioned, I guess the main motivation for this work is that existing kind of data hasn't done a particularly good job, I think, of answering this question, at least in Australia. And there are really three data sources that have been used. The first is teacher registration data. Basically, you want to teach in Australia, you need to be registered with the relevant state authority. That's great for measuring the number of qualified teachers in a particular state. But it suffers because a lot of teachers who leave teaching keep their registration and we miss people moving between states because you might leave New South Wales to teach in Victoria. But so you show up as like a a teacher who's left in New South Wales, but you actually haven't left the occupation. We also can't identify where you're going when you leave or why you're leaving. Workforce data is pretty similar. Often, this is collected by state governments on the teachers they directly employ. Great measure of employment in the public system, not so good because it often misses temporary teachers, so casual relief teachers. And it's missing the private sector. So again, you're missing those moves between sectors and states. And then finally, survey data, which could potentially solve a lot of these problems and give us more info on like, you know, why people are leaving teaching. The issue is that the current surveys that have been running this space in Australia tend to have, yeah, very low response rates, fairly selected samples. And so while they might potentially help answer these questions, they haven't yet. There's also like obviously a cost component. If you want to track outcomes of teachers who are leaving five or 10 years after the fact, that's not going to be easy to do. Um, I'm going to skim over this because this was in the kind of introduction. But again, this is just saying that there's a wide variance of estimates and we know little about where teachers go. I'm also going to brush over this fairly quickly, but basically just highlighting this matters for policy because a lot of policies around how much we pay teachers are related to understanding attrition. Should we give teachers a higher pay rise when they first enter, like this New South Wales policy, which has increased teachers' starting salaries to $95,000, which is more than lawyers, I'm sure economists and engineers? Or should we do uh, something that supports kind of non-classroom teachers, kind of this admin staff who might take a bit of the kind of burden off them? So this policy in particular was funded, so $10,000 pay rise for teachers in New South Wales, funded by savings that were taken largely out of schools in non-teaching positions. And so while there's obviously a question about how effective those non-teaching positions are doing, there's a kind of an explicit trade-off that it's better that we pay teachers more and take away some of those non-teaching positions. Okay, so the data we're going to use is very similar to what Aram is using. It's this longitudinal linked employer employee data set built on Australian admin data. We're going to take a slightly different core of it. We're going to focus on personal income tax returns. And these are really important because they give us an individual's occupation and their salary income. And so individuals who report earning a salary income, at least in the period of time we're looking at from 2009 to 2019, have to report an occupation code. And I think it's something like 99-ish percent of people report some kind of occupation. It's not something you need to get audited for by the ATO. So it's not kind of like a something where it's largely self-reported data, but you will get prompted if your expenses don't align with your occupation. So there's not, no kind of guidance. We'll link that to payroll data to get information on an individual's employer. So whether they're private sector, public sector, higher education data, which is where we're going to get information on their kind of pre-university academic ranking, their ATAR, various location and demographic data and census data, which gives information on their place of work. I probably won't be talking too much about most of the things that this data gives us, but this is more to demonstrate that one of the benefits of linked admin data is not just like a potentially better measuring attrition, but you can look at all these different aspects of attrition that this linked data gives you. So the obvious question is, um, this is self-reported data on tax data sets. We're kind of at a measurement conference. How accurate is this as a measure of the number of teachers in Australia? Is it just going to be completely missing mark? One thing we have done, but it's not cleared from the ABS to kind of display, but we can compare what people report in their census data to what they report on their ATO data in the one year we have of the census. And again, you have to trust me on this, but it aligns fairly well. The other thing we've done is compare the kind of implied aggregate number of teachers in the tax data to a couple of public data sets. One of those is actual workforce data from an Australian body that is kind of responsible for measuring the number of, among various things, the kind of resources expended by schools, including the number of teachers measured in FTE. The other is survey data from the ABS, which provides an estimate of the headcount based on, I think it's roughly 40,000 person ongoing survey. And then this is what our estimate from tax data looks like in a headcount form. So it tracks fairly closely the labour force survey headcount measure and the trends over time are pretty similar to the workforce FTE data. And obviously, we expect some kind of difference there. And I think roughly it works out at something like 1.25 teachers in terms of headcount per FTE. So I think it's about a four-day working week on average, so reasonable-ish. Our methodology in terms of how we're going to measure attrition is quite simple. We're just going to take all individuals employed as a teacher, ask, are you employed as a teacher in any of the next three years? Because we're truly trying to look at movements out of the workforce rather than just, you know, you're a casual teacher who drops in and out, you take a year off maternity leave or something. If you are, you're still a teacher. If you're not, we look at whether you're employed somewhere else in a different occupation. This is going to be a kind of key focus group. Then we'll look at people if they enrolled in university in the next three years. That's a really small group because these are people who are not working but at uni. And then the last group is just the neat people who are not in employment, education or training. Okay, so then on to some results. Kind of headline figure is how many teachers are leaving. So if you remember back at the start, kind of existing research implied five to 50% leave within the first five years or kind of an annualized attrition rate roughly between 1 and 10%ish. Obviously, it's not quite that, but something around that. And what we find is an estimate kind of in the middle, which is that in 2009, about six-ish percent of the teaching workforce in Australia left teaching. So they weren't employed as a teacher for the next three years. And that fell to about 4% of the teaching workforce in 2019. Notably, most of that decline has come from a decline in the number of teachers changing occupation. A similar amount are dropping out of the workforce and just not doing anything, not working or studying. This is, I guess, kind of notable because to me at least, it goes against some, some extent, the kind of public narrative about teacher attrition being a kind of growing problem over time. But at the same time, I think if you asked education experts whether 4% attrition was high or too high or too low, they probably would say it's still too high, you know? And so a kind of important thing is thinking about how this compares to other occupations in the labour market. And, you know, can we realistically, realistically expect teacher attrition to be a lot lower? What we do, just skipping over that slide, is we compare attrition rates amongst school teachers, and apologies for the really small text here, to other ANSCO subdivision, which is kind of the Australian classification. And what you see is that teachers compared to these other subdivisions have relatively low rates of attrition. The kind of important touch point is that teachers aren't themselves a division. They're actually part of a division. So this is not quite an apples-for-apples comparison. But it definitely suggests that teacher attrition is not super high relative to most occupations. And this is consistent if you look at females and males, so it's not just a story of composition. And if you look at age breakdowns, it's a similar story. Now, obviously, the, again, the kind of policymakers not going to be interested in whether teachers have lower attrition rates than hospitality workers or food preparation assistants. They're probably more interested in nurses, maybe other emergency services type workers, firefighters, essential services type workers, firefighters, et cetera. And so if we drill down into just these kind of, and this is just selected, but this kind of maybe what you think of as the better comparison occupation. So this is moving away from the kind of ANSCO setup to just picking out a few specific cases. You do find that school teachers are no longer at the bottom. Police officers actually have even lower attrition, which I was also surprised by. But they're pretty similar to nurses, firefighters and lower than some of those medical fields, which also require people to work in far-fung places and all across Australia. So I guess the kind of summary of that is that teacher attrition is maybe, compared to some studies, higher than we expected, but definitely not as high as the kind of headlines that get reported in certain areas of the media. And when you look at it compared to other occupations, it doesn't seem to be a standout, that's for sure. If anything, it seems to be towards the bottom. The other kind of interesting thing we're going to look at is who is leaving. And here, we could look at many different cuts. We could look at STEM teachers, we could look at different demographics, teachers in rural areas. I'm not going to do that for the sake of time. We're going to focus on just teachers pre-university academic ranks, their ATAR. And again, this could kind of go two ways. We could have the higher aptitude teachers being, you know, finding an easier time of teaching, being less likely to drop out of teaching because, you know, they're more naturally suited to it or something. You could also have the higher ATAR teachers having a, you know, stronger outside option, so being less likely to or more likely to leave. And kind of what we find is it's a bit of a mixture of the two. So on the X-axis here, we have ATAR bind. The no ATAR people are people who entered university without using their ATAR explicitly. Effectively, they're quite low ATAR individuals. You use some alternate pathway, not exclusively, but effectively. In terms of when you look at their dropout rates and other things, they behave like that. And so what you see is that those no ATAR individuals, which are kind of towards the bottom end of the academic performance distribution, have higher attrition rates and the high ATAR individuals, those in the kind of top 20% above ATAR, have higher attrition rates by quite some margin. And then if we break it down kind of further, this is now dropping the no ATAR people and just looking at those who have an ATAR. We see that the kind of spike at the top is really driven just by those who have ATARs over 95. So these are the kind of people who, they could be studying commerce at USW. Maybe they could be doing law or medicine at a few universities. So they have pretty strong outside options. The next question is, where are these teachers going when they leave? And again, I think some of the existing survey evidence suggests that a lot of teachers who leave move to a kind of education adjacent field. So maybe they're moving into curriculum design or becoming a private tutor or working in vets or at university as a tutor potentially. And what we found is pretty surprising. While there's a broad spectrum of occupations teachers move to, a surprisingly large share are moving into becoming carers and aides. Which for those in the Australian econo- or in the Australian context is kind of what we think of as like the National Disability Insurance scheme is a large employer of these individuals. There's a sizable share also moving to kind of early childhood education, which maybe makes a little bit more sense that, you know, early years of primary school might be similar to kind of later years of childcare and then a range of different things, including some of the occupations we might expect. Education advisors and reviewers, private tutors, et cetera. What's interesting, and again, this is now maybe more of an Australian context thing, is that this share going to carers and aides has really increased since we introduced the NDIS, which I think is now roughly a $40 billion program to provide support to people with a disability in Australia, but it's created a kind of huge suck on workforces across the economy because a lot of individuals. So that's kind of an interesting from a policy perspective, is this has changed a lot since the NDIS was introduced in 2014. And for context, the arrows here, there's the share pre-NDIS at the base of the arrow and the share post-NDIS at the top. The other interesting thing that I alluded to at the beginning is that like attrition seems to have be a different experience for different types of teachers. And so for primary school teachers, which are the kind of light blue dots, if you can see that, they're much more likely to work in carers and aides, early childhood. It's almost 40% now of the teachers who are leaving and changing occupation are going to these two occupations. Whereas for secondary school teachers, the shares moving to those areas are very, very different. They're much more likely to become or a bit more likely to become university lecturers or tutors, vet teachers, education advisors, et cetera. And I think this to some extent highlights that, you know, in Australia, we largely pay, at least in the public system, primary and secondary school teachers similar amounts of money, but they seem to have very different outside options. And so maybe how we think about attrition should be based on, yeah, a bit more nuance. I'll skip over this. This is just showing that it's largely lower ATAR teachers who are moving to become carers and aides. And then talk really briefly about why are they leaving, which is a causal question to which I don't have a causal answer. I just have some descriptive charts about earnings. The first chart is just highlighting that most teachers who change occupation receive a pay rise. So this is comparing their income before they left teaching the year before to the real income the year after they start their new occupation. And basically, what this is highlighting is that across age groups, which is our Y-axis, at least for the younger age groups, a bit over 60% of teachers who change occupation receive more money after they leave teaching than before. And it's a little bit lower for those 50-plus. But behind this kind of like, you know, median gain is a great deal of variation. And so what this chart shows, which is a little bit complex, but basically income relative to the income you had before leaving. So if you're above 100, it means you got a real pay gain. If you're below 100, you got a pay loss. And then just the share of teachers who are changing occupation fall into each of these bins. And so apologies for the kind of big bins at the either end. Disclosure rules mean you have to group them like that. But basically, it shows that there's a lot of teachers who are earning a lot more, 180% plus more than what they were earning as a teacher. But there's also quite a few who are taking a pay cut when they leave. And I'll skip over this. But the interesting thing here is when you look at this by ATAR, you see that it's much more likely for the very high ATAR teachers, the 80-plus's, to be in this big pay gain group. And it's more likely for the lower ATAR teachers to be in the kind of group that are taking a pay cut when they change occupation. Which again, is highlighting, I guess, that attrition is potentially a different experience for different types of teachers. And this is just highlighting that in the long run, this is 10 years after leaving teachers, this particular group, those that remain teachers earn more on average than almost all the occupations that teachers move to. But again, there's like selection going on here because people who leave teaching are not a random selection. In my one minute left, just a descriptive of why teacher attrition might have fallen. And kind of key thing here is thinking about that attrition rates or dropout rates at university for teacher courses have decreased over this time period, or a slightly early time period actually, from roughly 60% to 50%. So we've had quite a big drop-off in the number of people actually completing these initial teacher education courses. Part of this seems to be driven by the fact that the types of teachers enrolling has changed a lot. So again, I've focused a lot on ATAR throughout, but the share with high ATARs, 80-plus, has decreased from 22 to 17%. Shares with either no ATAR or less than 70 ATAR has increased over time from 66 to 70. And so that was kind of ATARs roughly correspond to completion rates is one of the reasons behind this. The other reason is that just in general, completion rates have been falling at Australian universities. So here we have the teachers in each of the ATAR buckets in the solid colored line and then the 20th and 80th percentile of all other narrow fields of education in the gray line. So you can see that while teacher dropout rates or completion rates, sorry, have been decreasing, apart from for the very high ATAR teachers, they've roughly tracked the kind of 80th percentile of all other courses. Yeah, that is everything. This is just a summary of what we talked about earlier.
So much, Jack, perfect timing as well. And I really feel I know a lot more about this now. So thanks a lot for this. Let's um, let's have some questions. You, you, you first, Kevin, of course.
Yeah, thanks for your paper. I, I was wondering how preschool carers are classified and whether that might explain that drift from primary into the carer category, given that there've been in recent years moves to put in minimum carer ratios to students and a fair bit of funding into that area.
Yeah, it's a really good question. My understanding is most of preschool teachers and childcare workers where you've had those kind of minimum qualification requirements and will be falling into the early childhood teacher category. And so it's a sizable group and especially for, so it's the second most common occupation. And for primary school teachers, it's the second most popular group, yeah. So it is definitely a big part of that, but actually, yeah, and I think a lot of those, those qualification requirements and things were brought in maybe slightly before, like over the early 2010s. So it might have been that there was an increase that we're not picking up here that's now fallen off a bit.
So Jack, thank, thank you. Excellent presentation. I just wanted to say, well, I wanted to ask, not too familiar with the ATAR system, but wasn't it introduced in 2009 in Australia? So is your analysis here slightly like subject to sample selection bias?
I don't think the ATAR, sorry, not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure it's, yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, so it's a good question. I actually just learnt something. So what's recorded in the data is actually a tertiary entrance score. So I talk about it as an ATAR, but it would be the UAI before 2009. Obviously, like different states have different systems. So, you know, people who do the international baccalaureate get some kind of translated score. People who do the OP in Queensland and things, yeah, but that's, it's a good question. It is actually just a, what feeds into the Australia's university matching algorithm, which is the tertiary entrance score rather than an ATAR per se.
Yep, although not exactly a follow-up, but so that was a very nice response. But the other thing I was wondering. But the other thing I was wondering was, when you gave that comparison of all the different attrition rates across all the industry, you used ages from 21 to 62, right? Like all, like all ages?
Yes.
I think it would be very interesting if you were to break it down a little bit more, especially because you mentioned at the very start, it'd be very, you know, it could be very different for, for people in different age groups.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I got this in spares, but the comparison, this is what it looks like, sorry for the change of colors, but for teachers versus these other occupations across age bins. And so apart from those who are older than 50, where health professionals, which is like nurses and doctors, just decrease a little bit. Apart from that, it's kind of a consistent story that teachers are towards the bottom across age groups. But it's, it's a good question because it does change a lot.
Thank you, that, so in terms of if you were taking this and speaking to a policymaker, is effectively, it's all super interesting, but the conclusion, attrition's not your problem. The issue is either you're not recruiting enough in the first place or the demand for teachers has changed substantially and we haven't kept pace with that. Would that be essentially where you'd land?
Yeah, I think so, I think it's, that's probably the main takeaway is that attrition, like beating down attrition, so it's so much lower than other occupations, might be really hard to do because people are going to work out that an occupation is not for them at some rate. And to make teachers be so much more sure of what they're doing when they enter than other occupations is probably pretty hard. So yeah, agreed, it's going to be difficult to reduce attrition by more. Supply is probably then more of the answer. And actually, if you look at enrollments in initial teacher education courses versus, say, nursing, teaching has really fallen behind. And so thinking about what is preventing people from enrolling in teaching courses, yeah. And then I guess the second related point is that attrition is different for different people. And so often the approach to recruiting and training and retaining teachers is uniform across different types of schools and across different types of teachers. And so whether there's a thought that if you want more, you know, higher ATAR teachers, maybe that's not something they want. But if you do want that, you might need to think about them differently to very low ATAR teachers in terms of how you retain them.
So then I guess part of the challenge is you do all of this amazing work, but effectively you want to tell people, look at slide one and then just don't worry about the rest of it.
Yeah, potentially. And I think it is a tricky area because part of what we're doing here is trying to say, there's a lot of existing evidence and, which I think borders on a little bit advocacy, that is pulling people in what I think is maybe the wrong direction. So you do the 20 slides and you really just say, okay, it's actually just slide one, but hopefully you believe me now that the existing evidence isn't sufficient.
So actually, I was going to ask things exactly in this direction. I was thinking about the flip side, which is, well, maybe your message should be also, we do worry about these things, right? It's in the media, everybody's worried about it. So then, you know, focus more on the narrative and think about, well, maybe it's working conditions that are not okay for the teachers who stay, right? Look at the police that's at the bottom of your chart. I live in Melbourne, I see the police striking every single day in the CBD. So they're not moving and maybe it's not because they don't have, because they do have outside options, but maybe they think that they don't. So they stay more than they should and they're just not happy in their jobs. And so I'm thinking, you know, if you wanted to go further in this work, maybe what you could do is look for some policy variation in, you know, maybe there are non-monetary incentives that were introduced, like, I don't know, teacher prizes, things like this that make them feel more valued. And maybe this is, this is also an important part of the job and decides who stays in the job versus who leaves.
That's a really good idea. I think we had some policy variation with like pay changes, but actually trying to focus on the non-monetary. Yeah, thank you for that.
You're going to get both questions, you can do it.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So it was just a personal observations, but I have a friend who is a migrant and she studied Master of Teaching just for the purpose of immigration. So I was wondering if your dataset incorporate like people who are migrant and did not have any ATAR score. Would that change your implication?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. And I think for the purposes of the condensed presentation, we focused a lot on ATAR. I think it's something that's a bit unique in the Australian data. But no, definitely from a broader perspective, like we've done some work on like First Nations teachers, people from a culturally and linguistically diverse background. And they actually have as well higher attrition rates, particularly in the early career. So yes, that's a very good idea and something we're looking to do is not just focus just on ATAR, but yeah, for the purposes of the day, yeah.
Well, I like to study, I think it could also be a case study on our tradition in general, where people move to and all that, and not just about this policy in general. But then of course you had to explain the differences in our tradition rates across the different areas. But a specific question, it looks like some teachers that left is substantially bad in terms of their earnings, right? Can you open that box a little bit? Because maybe they left not because they wanted to leave, but they had to leave because of some psychological reasons or making a parental leave. And then the reason why they aren't earning anything is because they don't earn anymore as opposed to making a bad career choice. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, no, I think that's, and anecdotally at least, I've heard friends who are teachers say similar things. It's the feeling like you can't continue to teach because the workload is too much, the support in school is not enough, is definitely a reason a lot of people leave teaching. So I'm sure there's plenty of being forced out and it would be interesting to look at those. But we don't think we have good data in the admin data, maybe Aaron or Sylvia can correct me if I'm wrong on whether, yeah, people have kids and things like that, but that could be another angle to look at. Yeah, that's a very good point.
I have a microphone, so I'm going to ask another question.
Oh, Kevin, please be my guest.
Thank you. You didn't do a comparison between teachers in the private and public sectors, which could be interesting to look at the attrition rates there. I understand in the public sector that, New South Wales anyway, teachers can take leave for a long period without giving up their position, which means incoming teachers are often for a very long period on temporary contracts.
Yeah.
So perhaps part of what you're seeing is just the incredibly good benefits that you have from being a teacher. You can dip in and out of being a teacher over a very long period and without ever losing your job.
Yeah, no, and I think definitely part of it is that, yeah, teaching, not just with that flexibility, but also with the nature of, like a lot of people, my mom included, were teachers partly because it provided flexibility to look after kids and things. So there's definitely some unique benefits to teaching that be part of it. In terms of the public-private, we have had a brief look at that. I'm not sure if it's in the spares, but interestingly, it seems to be pretty similar at the high school level, like almost identically tracking over time. But private primary schools seem to have much higher attrition rates than public primary schools, which is quite surprising. And then this correlates with an interesting finding, which again, I didn't include for the sake of the time, but that actually attrition rates in higher SES areas are actually slightly higher, driven by these private primary schools, where I imagine the teachers find the parents difficult or something. But anyway, it's, yeah, it's a good idea and definitely someone the policymakers will be interested.
I, I have a similar, my two senses that I've, I've got the similar like feeling that you, you come in and you say, oh, actually, you know, don't worry too much about people getting out of this job, but, but still it remains in the, in the public sphere, this concern, right? Me as a parent, when I see the, the teachers and, and they tell me how stressed they are, that I, so maybe the thing is to find, you know, to help us understand what's really upsetting people and why society is, it may be pointing the finger at the wrong number, but maybe there is something else, right, that's going on. Anyway, thanks so much, this is really, really cool.
Thank you.
Now Alexandra, I'm going to let you do the honors.
I'm going to do a test on the Britney Spears microphone. It works. All right, hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Yeah. My name's Alexandra. This is joint work with Jan Feld, who's in New Zealand, Nico Salamanca at Melbourne and Ulf Solit in Zurich. And this is a paper on same-sex teacher effects in education. It's a fairly long paper, so hopefully I can go through everything, but bear with me. So the starting point of my paper is surprisingly very similar. So we started from these really powerful narratives that we have all around us, that it's really important for girls to go to STEM that they have a female math teacher. And it's really important for boys in primary school to prevent them from failing, that they have male teachers in primary school. And we found lots of different reports, so UNICEF stuff, World Bank, OECD. There are also lots of policies implemented around this. I just heard a podcast from this, I'm going to say crazy person called Richard Reeves, who has this big book on boys and men saying, we need to hire male primary school teachers. It's really important. There's zero systematic review of the evidence and this is where we start. So is there actually a same-sex teacher effect on test scores and job performance? Or job preferences, sorry. So just to put everybody on the same page, what actually is a same-sex teacher effect? So we're going to call this the test score premium from having a same-sex teacher after taking out the effect of me being female and my teacher being female. So it's going to be captured by an equation that looks like this. I'm going to have my outcome. Here is test score for this slide, but we're also going to look at other outcomes. I'm going to have a female student dummy, a female teacher dummy. And I'm interested in this match effect, the same-sex teacher effect, beta three. And then you can add some dangles, like fixed effects at the school level, the classroom level, blah, blah, blah. But this is the nut of it. My beta three is going to be positive for lots of reasons. It can be that female teachers are better at teaching female students or male teachers better at teaching male students. Could be that male students respond better to male teachers or female students to female teachers. We're not going to say anything about the, you know, what's going to the beta three other than just it captures the match effect. So what we do in this paper is we're going to start by doing a meta-analysis. Because, you know, when you start with all of this narrative, these policies, then obviously you have to look at the literature and start with how many papers are out there looking at this? What quality of paper they are and what's the quality of the evidence? So we conduct a meta-analysis. We found 24 studies that look at primary, secondary education that are comparable, look at test scores and we find a pretty small effect. But then we were not satisfied with the meta-analysis and I'm going to tell you why in a few slides. But essentially, when you do a meta-analysis, we're using estimates from published papers. And there are lots of reasons why this might be an issue. So published papers could be biased because editors want to see positive effects or because just people don't pursue papers that don't have significant effects. So we're concerned about this. So we're going to then combine different data sets to conduct a multi-country study to re-estimate this effect that's underlying the different meta-analysis papers. And then what that's going to allow us to do is to actually study the global distribution and the generalizability of these effects. In other words, at that point, we're going to try to really go to this narrative. Is it as universal as we're reading in all these reports? Is it such a big deal? Okay, let's start with the meta-analysis. So a meta-analysis is a lot of work. We had pre-registered this meta-analysis with the Open Science Foundation. We had an army of research assistants try to look for every single study that followed these three inclusion criteria. The first one was if we're going to try to construct an average across different estimates, well, then we need to collect studies that have empirical estimates of same-sex teacher effects. We need those studies to have effects on test scores or grades because these effects need to be comparable, right? I cannot throw in there things on test scores and things on whether I want to go in STEM or not. So there need to be similar outcomes. And then lastly, we're going to focus on primary and secondary education because this is compulsory schooling. So we're going to think about the selection of students as being similarly, as similar across the different studies. We do this systematic search using everything that pops up on Google Scholar, Web of Science, pre-registered trials at those different registries. And then for all the papers we found, we collect every single estimate in the main papers' appendices. And then we extract and standardize effect sizes and standard errors to just make them comparable. So this is just a map that shows you, you know, the big narratives are based on papers from the US, China, India and basically Scandinavia. So this is the extent of what we know. The OECD tells us to hire more male teachers in primary school based on the United States. We collected 24 studies, so it's not even a lot of papers, it's 24 papers, 538 estimates. These are just the quantitative studies, right? In the background, there's also about 5,000 papers that have these big narratives and not a single point estimate in there. So obviously, these are not included here because we can't compare them. The median study looks at one single country, about 11,000 observations, and they find a median exposed minimum detectable effect size of about 13% of a standard deviation. For anybody who works on the economics of education, so I'm looking at Alberto, Sylvia, Jack, these are huge effects. Nobody finds this in RCTs and anything. 13% of a standard deviation is pretty huge. So this is already suggesting that, you know, these 24 studies we're building on are probably underpowered to some extent. We're going to estimate a three-level random effects model that's pretty classical in the meta-analysis literature. And this type of model is basically a weighted average across all the different point estimates, where the weights are given by the precision of the estimates that contribute, but allowing for these true same-sex teacher effects to differ between studies, accounting for the dependencies that are, you know, within study between the estimates. So in other words, you know, if I write one of those papers and I have 500 estimates, well, I want to have a way of saying that, you know, I'm the one who produced those 500 estimates. So they're somewhat related. Importantly, however, what meta-analysis methods allow you to do is to observe the difference between your estimates, but then take out the fact that they have some sampling error in there. So we're going to allow FX to differ systematically between studies, taking out sampling error. So this is the, is a standard type of graph when you do a meta-analysis, it's called a forest plot. Here I'm representing my raw point estimates and standard deviations. So remember, I standardized them so they're comparable. So that's why you want to do that. Standard errors on the Y-axis. And so here, the first thing to see is that there's actually quite a lot of variation in the effects that people find. The red dashed line here shows the average effect that we find. So it's 3% of standard deviation. That's much, much smaller than the 13% of standard deviation we had found in the median study. But again, there's a lot of variation. So the first thing to note here is we've gained a lot of statistical power, right? 13% of standard deviation to three is a lot smaller. But also I can tell you is there's a lot of underpowered estimates, as I've kind of preempted you to think about. So a good chunk of our estimates would not have had enough statistical power to pick up those 3% of a standard deviation, right? That's a small effect. So again, all of these big narratives boil down to 3% of a standard deviation. Now, of course, as I said, these are all published papers. For some of them, we also have the working paper version, but you know, most of them are just published papers. So you might be worried about what's the DGP underlying these papers, right? So editors can have biases, referees, authors, you know, that prefer not writing up papers. So you don't even see these point estimates that are insignificant because authors never precede them, pursued them. There are lots of different methods to correct for publication bias. We've applied 12 different procedures and I'm going to, for one second, show you this. No, saved by the mouse not working. Basically, when we apply corrections, we end up finding effects that range from minus 3% of a standard deviation to plus three. So in other words, based on the meta-analysis, it's not even sure if there is such an effect. Maybe it's a zero that's just varying, you know. So bottom line, same-sex teacher effects seem to be very small. They can disappear depending on how we correct for publication bias. And even then, our meta-regressions are actually underpowered to actually say anything about heterogeneity, right? So as I said, we have 24 studies, they look at one country at a time. So I cannot tell you whether these effects are actually driven by the US or by China. And this is something we really want to know for these big narratives again, right? Is it a story that's true everywhere or is it true in some specific settings? Does it depend on some features of these countries? We want to know these things. So we're going to conduct a multi-country study. A multi-country study, we like to call them super studies, it's fun. Multi-country studies are answering one research question using a consistent methodology with data from different settings. So the benefits of these kinds of studies are you're going to be able to increase generalizability of what you say because this time you're not going to look at just the US and China. You're going to look at a much broader variety of countries. You're going to get more statistical power. And, you know, when you look at these types of effects that you suspect from being pretty small, that's going to be really important. You're going to potentially be able to explain heterogeneity with institutional factors, things like, you know, do gender norms in these countries matter for how these same-sex teacher effects go? And lastly, and we think this is going to be important in some literatures more than others, but this one potentially, reduce the risk of publication bias. Because if from the get-go, you're kind of pre-registered that you're going to use the same methodology, look at at different countries, why would I exclude any one particular point estimate? I have no incentive to do that. In fact, I actually prefer having all of them to understand the distribution. There are more and more papers that actually do that, so, you know, we didn't invent this concept, but one of the things that we do in the paper is we really spend some time emphasizing why you wanna do that, why this is important. So the data is not very complicated. We're actually combining data from TIMS and PEARLs. TIMS and PEARLs are similar to PISA. These are large-scale international assessment data sets. TIMS focuses on math and science for students in fourth grade and eighth grade. TIMS focuses on the reading skills of children in fourth grade. We're gonna aggregate those data from 1995 to 2019, 25 years of data. Importantly, they have standardized tests that are built in to be comparable across waves in between countries, so that's gonna make it easier to compare those different places. And so we're gonna have 90 countries across SINKS continents. 55 of those countries never even showed up in my meta-analysis. So we're gonna now have, you know, some vision on Armenia, Georgia, you know, places that we've never seen in the meta-analysis. We're gonna have 3 million students, so 90 times larger than what we had in the median study in the meta-analysis. And we're gonna have also some detailed questions on student parents and teachers that are gonna help assess the quality of our research design. I don't wanna go too much into details, but just a few things that are important. So sampling, grade four, grade eight. For all the countries that participate in a wave, they sample 150 to 200 schools, take the grade that corresponds to the survey, and then within those schools' grade, they pick, on average, three classrooms per school, and within those classrooms, they're gonna observe all of the students. What that's gonna allow us to do is to exploit students within schools that are assigned to this classroom or that classroom, and to this math teacher or that math teacher. So this is the coverage now. As you can see, we have not just the United States, we have North America entirely, a good chunk of Latin America. It's not perfect, but it's much better. A good, I'm gonna say all of Europe and the northern hemisphere. We have several African countries, and that's gonna be really cool, because this is not something that you see at all in the meta-analysis. We're gonna have Australia, New Zealand, lots of other things. Wait, yes, this is my next slide. Our empirical strategy is gonna be, yeah, I'm gonna go quickly now, because I'm running out of time, but empirical strategy, as I mentioned, we have this earlier equation here with my beta 1 for students, sex dummy, teacher sex dummy, my match effect, my beta 3 that I care about. And then here, I'm gonna have these dangles I mentioned. So my X here is always gonna capture a subject fixed effect to pick up the specific selection of teachers that go into science, so math or science. I'm always gonna have students, sorry, subject and female student interaction terms to capture the sorting of students into subjects. Same thing for teachers, and I'm gonna cluster standards at the standard errors at the classroom level, because this is where the assignment of students and teachers to classrooms happen. So there are different types of identifying variations that I'm gonna use, and my story is gonna be causal to the extent that you believe in the specific sorting mechanisms that we're picking up through these fixed effects. So the benchmark in the literature is to use school fixed effects, and the reason is because the main concern that we have is I have a brilliant daughter, I put her in a school where there's a brilliant female teacher, right? So we're worried about this specific sorting of students into schools and teachers into schools. I have a balancing table here to show you that, is it gonna work? It's this mouse, really quickly. So balancing table here, this is on the benchmark in the literature, so as you can see here, so these balancing tables, I'm showing you the main equation I just showed you before, where outcomes are these pre-assignment characteristics of students and teachers. I have exactly two coefficients that are significant at the 10%, and this is students' age in years. This corresponds to a four-day correlation, so it's not a lot. I'm not very worried about this form of sorting. And whether teachers majored in education, and this amounts to, I think, five, I think it was like 4% of the mean. So I'm not too worried about, like, systematic sorting of students and teachers into schools at that point. However, I'm gonna go much deeper than that. So I'm gonna add also classroom fixed effects in another specification, teacher fixed effect, student fixed effect, and then teacher and student and teacher two-way fixed effects. And this is gonna be our preferred specification, and it's gonna rule out pretty much most concern that you may have remaining at this point. Our specification is gonna exploit basically the variation within students between subjects in the sex of their teacher, right? So I'm gonna compare my test scores in math, where I have a female teacher, versus science, where I have a male teacher. Yeah. So these are the main results on the test scores. Here, I'm keeping the largest possible sample, but, you know, when you use different sets of fixed effects, you have different parts of the samples that are removed or added, where you have the actual variation, right? So here, this is basic country fixed effect, so here, this is pretty much just an association, right? So you see, we find an effect of 1.3% of a standard deviation, so we're less than half smaller than what we had found in the meta-analysis. This is my benchmark estimate, my school fixed effect, 1.5. So already, you see, you know, we're not moving that much, so there's probably not a lot of sorting to be worried about once you actually have your school fixed effects. This is here, my preferred specification, and you see that pretty much, you know, the effects are identical. What's interesting is that my R square goes from 0.38 to 0.96. So at this point here, when I have teacher and student fixed effects, I'm not too worried about, too worried about other forms of sorting that are sneaking in. There's not much variation left to explain anyway. I could show you the same slide using the same sample throughout, which restricts, you know, the variation to this most restrictive source of variation, but pretty much it's the same. So 1.5% of a standard deviation is what actually is behind these huge narratives on same-sex teacher. Let's look at job preferences now. So here, I'm exploiting this question in the TIMS dataset, which focuses on science. So now we need to exclude the PEARLs dataset, which looks at younger kids, because younger kids don't have much of an opinion on what they wanna do when they get old. So this question is really focused on grade eight students and is focused on, you know, which kind of occupation they wanna have after high school. And so here, what we're seeing is students are somewhere between 5.5 and 6.5% of a standard deviation more likely to be interested in pursuing science or math when they're exposed to a same-sex teacher in science or math. All right. Now, now we get to the actual exciting stuff. So generalizability of the effects. I've showed you an average, but it could really be that it's coming from just one or two places. So here, we're gonna exploit actually what we've learned from the meta-analysis methods and apply this to those data. So instead of looking at the average, I'm now gonna break it country by country, and you see that when we look at test scores, there's not actually a lot of variation. So yellow are non-significant effects. In most places, there's nothing at all. It's very small, close to zero. In a few places, ah, United States, positive effect, significant, and in a lot of countries, we just don't know much. So in other words, these effects are so tiny that it could entirely just be sampling error. When we look at job preferences, however, remember, the mean effect was larger, and now we have actually more meaningful variation. So we're gonna try to explain this. So what we do in this paper that's very unique is we're gonna combine meta-analysis methods, this idea of trying to get at the true underlying distribution of the effect, how much it varies across places versus sampling variation, with the multi-country design, country by country estimates. So here, what we're trying to get at is, you know, if I'm one of the countries here where I don't have a data point, how much can I learn from what I've seen in other places to extrapolate to me here? And to do that, I need to try to understand this true underlying distribution of the effect. So I'm gonna show you this slide, and then I'll come back to the previous. So basically, this is graphically what we're doing. In blue, I'm showing you just these different country-by-country estimates. In red, this is the estimated distribution that's underlying all of that. And here, what I wanna know is, well, is it that, you know, my mean is here, but for most countries, it's actually negative? And so there's really, you don't wanna apply these types of policies where you systematically hire male primary school teachers and female math teachers in secondary school, if it's actually gonna be a bad lottery, right, where you're likely to lose? But you do wanna do it if it's positive for most places. And so basically, we build these underlying distributions for different outcomes, and then we just look at that. What's the likelihood that you're gonna get something positive, and what's the likelihood that you're gonna get something higher than 5% of a standard deviation, a meaningful effect? So when we look at primary education test scores, what we find is that for, I forgot to mention, we look at test scores, job preferences, but also confidence in the subject and whether students like the subject, right? So these are important kind of underlying effects. So in primary education, we find that actually effects are really tiny, right? But also, there are lots of places where they're actually negative. So this is really not a policy that you wanna implement just like that. You wanna really think about it, potentially try, or see how it goes. Secondary education, however, we find that effects are near universally positive and higher than 5% of a standard deviation. So this is really encouraging, and this is true for all the outcomes. So it seems like at secondary school, there's really more traction for these narratives. Yeah, job preferences. And then lastly, we try to explain a little bit, you know, these, this heterogeneity that seems to be systematic with teachers of these countries, so things like norms, things like GDP. In the background, what you might be thinking about is the selection of teachers that go into these different subjects or... So here, the bottom line is the effects are systematically larger in countries that have higher GDP and more gender equal norms. So this is just another way to break it. So conclusion, meta-analysis, great, but, you know, some methodological issues there, specifically with statistical power and publication bias potentially. Multi-country analysis, awesome, hard to do, but really awesome, and allows us here, combining these two methodologies, to say something about the generalizability of effects for the first time. So thank you.
Thanks so much, Alexandra. I have to admit, I'm a big fan of this paper, and I've seen it before. Just when you do the meta-analysis and then you keep going, I'm like, wow, they're basically treating this massive meta-analysis as a literature review. That's like the pinnacle of how a literature review wants to be done. It's kind of amazing. And also, you know, the way you're thinking about the process of publication as well and all the bias, so super cool. But I'm not gonna ask questions, because I had my time for that. So we just have maybe five minutes to, yes?
Hi Alexandra, great paper. Just a quick question, and maybe I'm missing a little bit the point, so feel free to delete my question, in a sense. But like, you, you seem to think about teacher and the gender of teachers and the students, but I guess there is also the classroom overall. So I was wondering whether you could say more, I think you may have some information on how many female or male peers you have in your classroom and how these interact with teacher and complement. Can you say something about that? Is it something?
No, so in this particular context, I can't, because to be able to do that, I'd be, I would have to observe the same teacher with multiple classrooms, right? To have variation separately between the teacher sex and the class composition. So you probably need a different dataset where you'd have, you know, teachers observed in different classrooms, either over time or simultaneously, but yeah, I can't do that in those data. Yep.
Yeah, I was gonna make a similar point, because funnily enough, when I was doing science at school, they split the classes into boys' classes and girls' classes, because again, this idea that if the girls were together, the female teacher, they do better, and interesting to sort of see all of this. I guess, coming back to the policy perspective, which you can probably guess my background, I guess the key takeaway really is that it's probably not a desirable behavior to recruit based on, based on sex, because like you said, there's a university positive and secondary school, but it's tiny, and probably the negatives of taking that approach are probably gonna be outweighed by all of the costs and stuff of having to create some artificial environment to bring teachers in. So fundamentally, is this sort of something where it's like, if it happens, it's probably gonna be positive, but it's not necessarily something you'd want to sort of pursue?
I think the way I think about this is if you focus on exactly this research question, then the main message is caution. Big narratives don't always translate into reality. That's the first thing. But I think my message is a bit more general even, is generally, you know, narratives are not enough, right? We need harder evidence. We can't just go ahead and have blanket statements about, you know, male teachers are good for male students. Well, is it true everywhere? Is it, has it always been true, right? There's a lot of people working on, you know, different policies to recruit teachers that change the selection of teachers, things like this, right? So that's my general message would be more like, okay, whenever you read anything like a narrative, just think about it twice.
Well, there's probably a nice piece you could do across all of the three talks we've had in this session.
Exactly.
Where it's exactly the same thing. It's this really attractive narrative that's somehow really believable, but actually it's not underpinned by evidence.
You actually stole my closing point, which was like, this session is about, oh yeah, sure, this session is about destroying the narrative.
Quick question, obviously, more methodological from me. So the meta-analysis, you have these estimates, and then you put this into regressions, but the errors would have to be, I think, bootstrapped from the different countries. Did you do that? From the different studies? Otherwise, the errors, the estimates have errors, and they will basically, you won't pick up in the errors that you have.
Yes, so we do that.
You do that?
As standard, yeah.
The other question was between same-sex, do you also split it up? Is it possible to split it up between female, female, and male, male? Are there difference effects? Until now, I saw those two effects grouped.
No, so actually, when I gave the seminar at UNSW, we actually talked about this a lot, so you can't split it. No, it's a match effect, so it's female, female, the flip being male, male, but yeah, you cannot look at it separately. Which is interesting, in the narrative papers, the non-quantitative papers, there's a lot of discussion around this. Quantitatively, there's no way to disentangle it.
I think we can call it, it's a perfect timing. Thank you so much for coming. This was a very interesting session. Thank you.